Regular public hearing and meeting minutes. You all have those. Any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. On page 12 and 15, there's two minor corrections. One of them is the 10th paragraph down where it says Mr. Scott Simpson appeared before. They've got the BOA. It should be the commission. And that's mine. And then on page 15, the third paragraph down, I just left out if he was asking them to limit the B3 to their use only. So, they're very minor.
Okay.
With those two corrections, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes after court.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any other discussion or comments?
Are we talking about the number 28?
We are.
Yes. Is that what you put your hand down?
Yes.
Twenty-eight?
Pages 12 and 15 are the two corrections that I asked about.
Yes, I see what you're talking about. The BOA.
Right.
And what was the other one?
The other one's on page 15, third paragraph down. Says Ms. Johnson-Crowe asked Mr. Carpenter if he was asking them. There's no he in the sentence.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Do we have a second?
I thought we did.
Yes.
Okay.
It will now consider the December 12th, 2017 special public hearing and meeting minutes. Have any comments or corrections?
Mr. Chair, they seem correct. And I also move we approve them as reported. And I'll say.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Then we'll go ahead and move to item F, which is the audit presentation.
Hi, my name is Lyndy Gray, and I represent the firm of Pearson Gray. And we had the honor of performing this audit this year. And it truly is a pleasure because the staff is so confident and willing to do the right thing. It's just a great thing to see. I believe everyone has received our report and had a little time to review it maybe. Probably the most important thing to look at is page two, which is our opinion. And you have the best opinion, clean. You also had no audit comments. And that's pretty uncommon, actually. Right after our opinion, from pages three to eight, is the management discussion and analysis, which is prepared by Jan. And it's technically not required, but it's just a very nice comparison. It's nice that she spends the time to do this. And it just shows how much they care. And if you want to look at page nine, the cash balance is $83,009.84. This is as of June 30th, 2017. Cash balance is a little lower than last year, about $18,000 lower than last year. But keep in mind that after this date of June 30th, $44,736 is turning back over to fiscal court as excess fees. The revenue is on page 10. You have a little bit of a decrease and change in net position, which is kind of like if it was a corporate, in the corporate world, it would be a net loss of $5,419. But overall, you know, pretty close. After page 10, we have some footnotes. We have fixed asset footnote, there are significant accounting policies. Then at the very end, you have a report on internal control over financial reporting. And this is where, if we had found any significant findings, it would be in this audit, this report here. And we don't have it there. So, that's as good as it can get. But let me say, I'm not saying everything is perfect. I'm saying nothing came to my attention that should be in here. And the other document that you have is also on our letterhead, and it's required audit notification. And this is where, if I had problems with management, or if I had to make internal entries, several things like that, it would be in there. If we had none of those issues, we're still required to give you this and tell you we do not have the issues. So, we have fulfilled our requirements. Our name and phone number is on the letterhead. If at any time you all have questions about the audit, or anything else that I can help you with, please don't hesitate to call me. If I may not be there, I do a lot of work out of the office, but I will get back to you. I promise. Did you all have any questions about the audit?
We've got one quick question.
Okay.
I don't want to drag this out. But we've had an issue locally in the city, county, and all that, on the pension plans and all that sort of thing. Does anything that you do relative to auditing this department or whatever get into that pension and funding and pension plans? Is there any? There was no comment in your report?
No, because fiscal court actually pays your payroll, and your pension is under that umbrella of fiscal court. So, they get to deal with the net pension liability. Although, for fiscal courts, it's not the same as the city, if you're thinking of the city audit. They report on it.
In general terms, why was there no comment on this in your audit?
Because you don't actually pay the payroll. Fiscal court pays the payroll.
And this was last fiscal year, so it wasn't, we're not dealing with the pension issue yet.
Well, but, I mean, fiscal court, fiscal court has the pension liability for the planning commission, because they pay your payroll. Their checks come from fiscal court.
And then that's split up among the cities and the county, based on.
But it is not really listed separately in our statements as a liability.
No, it's not. No, because it's under fiscal court.
Any other comments, questions? Does it indicate action on it?
We would like a motion and a vote on it.
Okay. Do you need a motion to accept the report?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the report.
Please present it. I'll say the motion.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Staying. With that, we're going to go ahead and move into, thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation. With that, we're going to go ahead and then move into the public hearing of the items before us tonight. And so, good evening. I'm Bill Bush, the planning commission chairperson and hearing officer tonight. The meeting is a public hearing on zone change amendment, application 2540, zone change applications 2504, 5, 6, and 7, and zoning map amendment for a cell site, application number 2508. In addition to the public hearing on these items, we will also be meeting to consider two part applications, one for Hunter Ridge and one for Miller Springs Estates. And we will also consider action on the PUD amendment, application 2503 Woodland Springs, for which we concluded a public hearing on December 12th, 2017, and tabled decision in order to have time to digest the considerable testimony that was offered at that hearing. For this meeting, and for this meeting to be orderly and constructive, please listen carefully to the following hearing guidelines. For each application, I will introduce the application and ask the director to provide a presentation. I will then ask the applicant to present the application, including any witnesses and/or exhibits. After the applicant finishes the presentation, then I will ask if any audience members have any questions of the applicant. Only one person at a time may speak, so that everyone may hear his or her questions. Anyone wishing to ask a question should wait to be recognized, then come before the audience and commission. State your name and address as clearly as possible, and for the record, and ask, then ask any questions. The applicant may respond and ask any questions of that person testifying. So, you have the presentation, you have the questions, and then, after all questions have been asked, then I will ask if any audience member wants to make any comments, pro or con, on the application. The applicant may address and/or respond to any of the comments, and may ask questions of any person making a comment. The planning commission asks that all questions and comments pertaining to the proposed zoning map amendment be considered, and the commission will only allow relevant comments or questions. Please avoid redundant questions or comments, as they only make for an unnecessarily long meeting and transcript. After the public hearing on each application, I will close the public hearing and ask the planning commission to discuss and make their recommendation on the application. The planning commission may table any application tonight for further review and discussion of the testimony that was presented during the public hearing. If the planning commission makes a recommendation on the map amendment tonight, its recommendation may become final, and the map amendment shall be automatically implemented, subject to the provisions of KRS 100.347, as set forth in the planning commission recommendations. Unless, within 21 days of the planning commission's final action tonight, any agreed person files a written request with the planning commission that the final decision shall be made by the appropriate legislative body, or the appropriate legislative body files a notice with the public, the planning commission, that the legislative body shall decide the map amendment. If the legislative body chooses to decide the map amendment, the legislative body shall take final action upon the proposed zoning map amendment within 90 days of the planning commission's recommendation. Thank you for your cooperation and attendance. Got a great group here tonight. Now, the planning commission director will swear in all persons who wish to testify tonight. Director.
All those wishing to testify either for or against the applications, if you raise your right hand, it will be sworn in. Do you swear a firm testimony about to give the truth, best of your knowledge? If so, say aye.
I do.
If you have not signed in, if you would sign in before you leave, so we can have a record of your attendance tonight. That's it.
We have one amendment and I think five total changes. And we will start with the amendment. So, we're going to begin with the public hearing on application number 2440, the amendment. That's Troy Dennison has filed an application to amend the previously approved B2 PUD development plan at 112 North Third Street in Bardstown, section 6.12D2. Director Jack, do you want to give an overview of that?
Okay, this is a previously approved PUD for a restaurant, or I'm sorry, a bar serving liquor by the drink. You all have previously seen an application for them to have outdoor seating behind the facility. They are now wanting to expand that outdoor seating for the PUD, and so that's what he's here for tonight.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Do you wish to make a presentation, or is your application sufficient?
I'm just looking to expand.
Start with your name and address, please.
Troy Dennison, with Third Street Cap House, 112 North Third. Just looking to expand outdoor seating and propose building a outdoor patio bar for summertime seating outside.
Any questions of the applicant?
I have a question. When I looked at the site, is, there's a number of parking spots right behind your outdoor area now.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you moving further out into the parking area?
I'm wanting to expand two of those parking spots.
If you take two of the parking spots.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, that's approximately, what, 30 feet, 20 feet?
Probably 20, because it's going to run in an angle. If I get too far out, it's going to interfere with Joe Buckman's entrance to his parking lot.
Yes, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
From the commissioners here, do you want, anybody have a comment or question?
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question. Have you had any noise complaints, or any police come because of excess noise, or anything with the outdoor patio?
If it gets out of hand, I actually call them.
Okay. But have you had to do that with the smaller operation outside the.
Mainly on the bigger weekends.
Okay.
You know, if the weather's really nice, bourbon festival, street concert. But any other time, you know, I shut it down, last call was 12:30. Everybody out at 1:00. If there's an issue with them lingering, then I call the police officers, they come clear everybody out. Because I don't want them there either.
Troy, since this is the historic district, this building you're planning on erecting for an outdoor bar, is that going to come into play as far as the design of that? It is?
You'll have to go through designer review, because people want to be approved.
Now, I've already been to historical, and they've approved everything that occurred here.
And then, because it's a structure, they'll come through our office for zone.
10 by 20. If that be the case, are there any other comments from the audience? If not, I'm going to close. I'll get them. I'm going to close the public hearing, and entertain a testimony, your application. And now, I turn to the planning commissioners for any other comments that you have a question.
You had the original.
He had a question.
My mistake. We're not closing the public hearing, then, I'm sorry.
You had the original plan from, I'm looking at, on August 28th, 2015. Talk about your hours of operation, the seating and all that, at that point in time. Is the only thing that's really changing to that set of requirements, just the physical space and the number of seats, or are you proposing changing the operation on the outdoor?
I'm sticking with all the times. Just wanting to expand the patio and build the outdoor patio bar.
What about the type of entertainment and all that that you have out there? This specifically talks about a kind of a single artist type music, Monday to Thursday. And Friday and Saturday, you have a little bit longer hours, but it really didn't talk about multi-piece bands or any of that. Are you going to, are you wanting to do that?
I would mainly like to do that on special weekends, but I've been there two and a half years, and I've yet to do that.
So, is that a no for the most part, or?
I would like to, if, I didn't know if I needed to bring that up here now.
I mean, you're, well, I mean, you're really dealing with a use serving alcohol by the drink. And this is more of an expansion of that bar facility. You know, they're allowed to have music, and any noise issue will be handled with the city ordinance with regard to music.
But this particular number does not supply single artist music.
That was not a condition of the original PUD. I think it was discussed at the hearing, but I don't think it was originally.
That says it's reconditioned. And that quote in paragraph says it's reconditioned.
Yeah, that's way more vague than the motion.
I mean, that, you know, you all can reconsider that, but I, you know, I really, I mean, you're dealing more with the use issue, and, you know, he's allowed, he would be allowed to do that, even if he wasn't serving, if he was serving beer and wine, he could do that today. I just don't think it's really a land use issue that.
Well, we approved a plan with those conditions. We're planning, we're approving an amendment here, which is only expansion of the area. All those other conditions would remain if we approved the amendment as presented.
If that's what, if that's what the approval was, yes. Wishes to change that, as far as.
He's not applying to expand the.
You're dealing with the use of the property here, and this specific use needs to be expanded based upon his, his, his plan of goals, so whatever conditions previously applied would not.
So, to be clear, we approved this amendment here this evening, and you wanted to expand to multi-instrumental containment, you need to come back and ask for.
Okay. Right now, it's just one acoustic person.
Single artist. It doesn't say acoustic, it says single artist.
Okay.
Yeah. With that thought in mind, any other questions from the audience, or from the commissioners? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and entertain a motion.
I make a motion to recommend approval of the requested plan U B2, B2 PUD amendment as requested, to allow the applicant to enlarge this area of operation and to erect an outdoor bar, under the same conditions as what he was previously operating. A motion is based on the testimony and evidence that's presented public hearing, based on that testimony and evidence, and make all findings of fact that the amended PUD is in accordance with the adopted comprehensive plan, specifically in that property lies in the Bardstown Central Business District.
Is there a second?
A second. These findings of fact, recommendation included, et cetera, the applicant's file, which I reviewed prior, make this motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Staying. Okay. Next, we'll pick up.
Thank you very much.
Pick up zoning map amendment number 2504. Planning commission now puts the public hearing on application 2504. Jacob D. and Catherine L. Hall have filed an application to rezone 0.172 acres on Raspberry and Cranberry Alley, and approximately 217.72 feet south of West Flage Avenue, from B2 Central Business District to R3 multifamily residential district. Are the applicants wishing to make a further presentation, other than what's in your file?
Hope it don't be not related. Jacob Hall, leave the addresses, 205 Flage, is what the proposed address would be. I just want to change the back part of the lot to be uniform with front part, which is R3. That's what the recommendation from Ms. Johnson-Crowe was, plan to build a house, eventually, possibly detached garage, if everything goes right. But we have to do, get this approved before we go from historic forward, so. Make sure we get all the documents.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, Mr. Parrish?
My name is Don Parrish, I live at 205.
As long as city can pick you up, that's, if you'll just speak loud enough, it seems she can pick you up on the.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
And address, please.
My home address is 205 West Flage Avenue, which is next door, across the alley, actually. My concern is that, the, my only concern really is the fact that it is a multifamily residential zoning that he's wanting to go to. My curiosity is, is he planning to build only a single unit dwelling there?
And it is.
Okay, I'm satisfied with that.
I'm loud, you don't need it. You don't need it, you're fine. I'm Ann Rosalie Ballard, I live at 204 West Flage. While you are, I don't know when to speak up about this, but I wanted, it is R3. We have no problem with that, as long as it's a single family residence. But while we're at it, we're wondering if Janet can, Jan can start invest, changing our whole street, the 200 block, to R1, to preserve, I'm sorry, Joe, I'm blowing right here, but preserving our block to R1, to single family. So, I'm just saying, this is fine for him to do this, but I would like to ask, address Jan about checking on R1 for that whole block, for the 200 block. Right. So, let me clarify, this property is already, it's our split zone. The majority of the property is only B2. The rear portion is the majority B2 zoning. And so, that was recommended, if it's, if it's a majority zone, particular B2, then he could use it as a commercial zoning, which in this location would not be appropriate for that neighborhood for a commercial use to be on West Flage. So, that was the recommendation, was to rezone it all to R3. The R3 is consistent with what's already there in the neighborhood. What Ann Rosalie is discussing is, the city of Bardstown, several years ago, on East Flage initiated a neighborhood rezoning to ensure the protection of the single family residential character. So, they rezoned it in the planning commission, Mark, you probably were on the planning commission at the time. They rezoned it from multifamily to R1C, which is single family residential, as a way to protect the single family residential character of the neighborhood. And so, that's what I think Ann Rosalie and several have approached me. We've got other areas on North Fourth Street and West Broadway that are all zone B2, but they're all single family residential or residential in character. So, that's something that can be brought up with the neighborhood and maybe discussions. I know we have two city council members here tonight, that maybe we could sit with the neighborhood and some planning commissioners and figure out whether that can be done, similar to what was done on East Flage and East Broadway.
Thanks. I didn't know this was the time, but thank you all.
You're sure welcome, thank you. Any other questions from the audience? Want to come up from the commissioners?
I'll add one.
Yes, sir.
Your intent is to build a single family home or whatever?
Yes, sir.
You're not really saying it, but I might ask the question, is that implying that you would be in agreement to that zoning always being single family, or what happens if next generation, if he sells a lot or whatever? I guess is why I'm asking the question.
Well, I think that's where Ann Rosalie is coming from, is, you know, any of those homes down there, if they ever were removed or destroyed for any reason, somebody could automatically go in and put multifamily in its place, as long as they met the density requirement, parking requirements, and other things. So, I think that's where the issue of protection of the neighborhood comes in, is that, is R3 really appropriate for that neighborhood?
So, does it add anything for me to ask him if he's willing, while he owns it, to leave it as a single family?
You could ask him to agree to that condition, and that protects the.
That would be a condition? Would you be willing to agree to that condition, or are we?
Yeah, are you saying, as long as I?
As long as you own that piece of property, if we rezone this and approve this tonight, that for your home and whatever, they will always remain a single family?
My only question is, if I build a garage, according to this story, I have to build consistent with the height, and the height of the house would be the same as the rest of the street, which are all two stories, could I build an apartment above that garage in that same zoning? Has agreement with that, or is that?
No, the answer is yes. The historic district has, there's two different ways to go about that. One is the historic district has, under section 15.22, the conditional use permit, where anyone can apply for a conditional use permit in the historic district for any use that the historic review board and the board of adjustments would deem compatible with the historic character of the neighborhood. So, that conditional use permit would be available, as well as, there is a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling already in R3. We would give him, as long as he had two times the minimum lot size. So, either way, he would, you would have the flexibility to be able to do that with a conditional use permit.
My only question, is that going to cost me more money to do that?
Well, you don't have, you would have to do that regardless.
Okay.
It's going to cost you $11.50 for the conditional permit, but that would happen regardless of what they're asking you to limit the home. He wants to limit the principal use of the property to single family.
Yes.
And then you could do the accessory dwelling if the board of adjustments approved it is.
Okay, yes.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
So, I would just clarify that the principal structure is.
That principle.
Single family residential.
Any other questions from the commission? None, we'll entertain a motion. None, we'll entertain a motion to, on the application.
I make a motion to recommend approval of zoning map amendment 2504 on agenda 496. If they've all agreed, condition that if we limited the single family residential as the applicant has agreed to. My motion is based on the testimony and evidence as presented at the public hearing. Based on the testimony and evidence, I make the following finding of fact that the zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan specifically in that the property lies in the urban traditional residential neighborhood of the city and adjoins existing R3. Further, this would combine a split zoning of one lot with the R3 being more appropriate for the neighborhood than the B2 central business district. These findings of fact and recommendation include as an exhibit the applicant's file, which I have reviewed prior to making this motion.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Stained? Do you approve? Thank you. Next, the planning commission opens the public hearing on application 2505. VMW Holdings LLC, applicant owner, and Boone Realty LLC, co-applicant developer, have filed an application to rezone .072 acres at 421 Gaffney Lane, portion of survey of land for Laurel A. Boone, proposed track A, Boone Realty LLC, amended minor flat from R2 to family residency to I2 heavy industrial district. Director Jan, do you have any comments to add?
I think Jerry's here, if he wants to add anything, but this, several years ago, Boone Realty expanded their use, and I know Mark and Markham were on the board of adjustments when this occurred, and when that was done, they were just short of their open space requirement. So they are now wanting to purchase this track A to replace open space on their property and to come into compliance with the zoning regulations. So this is part of the Gaffney Lane residential neighborhood, it's located under a utility line, it would remain as open space and you could ask Jerry, you know, if he had, it's pretty steep slopes there, so there's not a lot that could occur on that property, but it's simply to be able to rezone it, add it to his property as a permanent part of it and use it as open space.
Okay. Very good. Does the applicant wish to speak?
I'm not there, no.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience have a question for the applicant? And so then Jerry, if you'll go to the microphone, introduce yourself and give your address.
Jerry Boone, 100 Bloomfield Pike is where we're talking about.
Yes, ma'am? Your name and address?
I'm Jennifer Rhodes and I live on Gaffney, 416 Gaffney Lane. And my only concern is that if we change it to what he's wanting to change it to, to, instead of two family to heavy industrial, that's going to affect like our whole street. Not only that, like trucks are already getting confused and coming down our street and I have three kids that play, it's a dead end street, there's six houses, I have three kids that play on the dead end street. And just the other day, one of his trucks were trying to deliver and got stuck, you know, and I'm only concerned for my children and I, I'm just not really, I mean, I'm not really fully aware of like what it's going to do as far as like changing it to that, but it's just a concern.
My understanding is what stipulates that it's only used for open space, you must see any progress.
It's not any good for anything. I mean, it's a big heel side and I just need it for the open spaces.
And there's no access points that will be coming out to there?
What happens if it gets like sold in future or something?
If he agrees to that condition, that condition will run with the land, so it would go with the devoner.
That nothing can ever be done with it?
It would be used as open space.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience? Seeing none, I will, from the commissioners, questions of the applicant? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much. And see if we have any discussion.
It's on a power line reinvestment, he couldn't go along with it too long.
No. And the purchase will actually merge with the fee.
I see nothing like that.
Okay. Very good. Then I'll entertain a motion regarding the application.
I make a motion to approve zoning map amendment 2505 with the following agreed conditions that the ground remains green space, open space, and now forever. My motion is based on the testimony and evidence that presented at the public hearing. Based on that testimony and evidence, I make the following finding of fact that the ground is not really available, it's been a burdened place, it's also located underneath the power lines, so it really couldn't be developed anyhow. These findings of fact and recommendation include as an exhibit the applicant's file, which I reviewed prior to making this motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Boone? Second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Stained? Very good. Next, the planning commission will open the public hearing on application 2506, which is James Markham, Kathy Thomas Markham, applicant owners, and Derek and Tiffany Boone, co-applicant developers, have filed an application to rezone 3.358 acres at 694 JT Riggs Road, portion of track one, Boone Agricultural Division, from A1 agricultural district to R1A, single family residential district. Director Jan, any comments on that?
This is located within the New Hope hamlet. They are simply wanting to reduce the size of their track and in order to go less than five acres under A1 zoning, they have to have it rezoned to R1A. The residual part of the track will be adjoint and permanently added to the adjoining property owner, so they're just wanting to rezone that, their house track with the lesser acreage.
Is the applicant here? Applicant, do you have anything else you want to add to your application? Does anybody in the audience have any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, I'll ask the commissioners, any of the commissioners have a question for the applicant? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of zoning map amendment 2506, agenda 496. My motion is based on the testimony and evidence as presented at the public hearing. Based on that testimony and evidence, I make the following findings of fact. The zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Specifically, it's located with the New Hope, in, within the New Hope hamlet residential neighborhood, surrounded by suburban and rural residential uses. The rezoning will not create any additional lots and is in agreement with the overall comprehensive plan goals and objectives. This amendment will not adversely affect road capacity access or traffic flow and is consistent with the transportation plan goals and guidelines. These findings of fact and recommendation include as an exhibit the applicant's file, which I have reviewed prior to making this motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
The proponents present? With the aud.
You've got a motion and a second.
Oh, excuse me. Thanks, ma'am.
You're welcome.
All in favor say aye. All opposed? Stained? Thank you. Next, the planning commission will open the public hearing on application 2507. Gary and Bernadette Delaney have filed an application to rezone 2.136 acres at 361 Corey Lane, proposed tracks one and two, divisioned lots of Gary and Bernadette Delaney, from A1 agricultural district to R1A, single family residential district.
This is located within the suburban residential neighborhood, they're simply wanting to divide what is a non-conforming lot, it doesn't comply with the minimum five acres of A1, they want to divide the lot into two single family residential lots requiring a R1 zoning.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have anything to add to your application? Are there any questions from the audience regarding the applicant? No? Okay. Any questions from the planning commissioners? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to recommend approval of zoning map amendment number 2507, agenda number 496. My motion is based on the testimony and evidence as presented at the public hearing. Based on that testimony and evidence, I make the following findings of fact. The subject property is located within the suburban area and is within a developing area characterized by a mixture of rural and suburban residential development. The requested R1A zoning and proposed use are consistent with the overall goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. The public, the planning commission now opens the public hearing for application number 2508. That's the electronic site. Kenneth R. and Mary Ellen White Dixon, applicant owners, and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, doing business with AT&amp;T Mobility, co-applicants and developers, propose to construct a telecommunications tower at 438 Barnes Road, track number one, agricultural division for Wilbur White Farm. Is the applicant, Director Jan, do you want to add anything?
No, I'll just let the applicant make her presentation.
Okay. Is the applicant here? The applicant is here. Does there need to make a presentation? Does anybody in the audience have any questions for the applicant?
Let's do the presentation.
Excuse me?
Let's do the presentation. Let's hear it.
He has to give the opportunity to give a presentation.
Okay. Well, on the other hand, I mean, I will tell you, I've done this long enough that if that's an invitation for me not to speak and not to introduce everyone, I am, I am, I am prepared to sit down with style and grace, Mr. Chairman. You're very, very well done. This is a new record even.
David, did you do the name and address?
Okay. For the recorded record, my name, my name is David Pike, I'm a principal with Pike Legal Group, PLLC, PO Box 369, Shepherdsville, Kentucky. The rest of my contact data is of record in the somewhat voluminous documentation we've been filing with your planning staff. Now with style and grace. Any other questions from the audience? Any questions from the commissioners?
I have two questions. I actually read the pilot paper and I went out and looked at the site. I have a question on your site selection. The site is in a cluster of a number of small houses right around it. Did you consider another site closer to the landfill away from houses?
Well, we considered a number of sites, but it's important to recognize the following. A, any site has to be located within the search area that we distributed. And second, we meet your regulatory requirements. And that's the end of that discussion, because at the end of the day, you set those requirements and we meet all of those criteria.
Okay. The other question is on the tower construction itself and the wind load. And it says that the wind speed of 89, which is fine, but only 30 miles per hour with three quarters inch of ice. Now, we've had ice storms well over an inch or more and that's catastrophic. And it's awfully tall and it's really close to this one house. If it fell, how, would it miss this house or what would happen to the structure?
So at this point, what we need to do is to distribute hearing binders that I brought different. If we could, Chairman, in the end, do so. Just so.
No, yeah, yeah. Since give that to us.
Does everyone have a copy? I should also at this juncture indicate that a copy of this hearing binder should be cumulatively introduced as an exhibit in this public hearing proceeding since I'm going to refer to it. Included in that binder are expert reports from a number of subject matter experts who are here with me this evening. One of those, one of them is Marshall Sligle, who's one of the only fellows in the American Institute of Certified Planning in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. The other one is Glenn Katz, who's the current president of the State Appraisal Association, you know, and, and the third major expert's subject matter report is from Mike Salvo, who's a radio frequency design engineer with AT&amp;T Wireless. And finally, there is a subject matter report from William Grigsby, a licensed PE in the Commonwealth of Kentucky, who is an expert on cell tower construction and safety. I would note for consideration that it is 350 feet to the nearest residential structure from this tower. I think Mr. Grigsby would be in the best position to answer the question that you've just indicated. I will tell you, it meets and exceeds all federal and state requirements.
That's all I need to hear.
Okay. In that case, you know, if you don't want to hear anything, Mr. Grigsby's.
It just, three quarters of an inch of ice didn't sound like very much to me considering our past.
If you read his, if you read his report later in a bit of dramatic engineering flourish, he indicates that in the event of a catastrophic event which would ever bring this structure down, nothing else would be left standing around it because its structural design criteria exceed those of all other buildings.
Yeah, it says F2, F3. Yeah, I see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? I will now sit down. If not, we'll close the public hearing. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion regarding the application.
with the application as submitted. My motion is based on testimony and evidence as presented at the public hearing that the cell tower siding is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan and zoning regulations based on the following findings of fact. They're contained on page four of the staff report, 1 through 6. Is that sufficient, Mr. Chairman?
It is.
Per the request of the findings of fact, improve on through the summary of the presented evidence and testimony as presented at the public hearing.
That includes as most recent. Saying that he just?
Yes.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, Meryl, she's a second. Any other questions from, discussions from commissioners? Not all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Stained? Thank you very much. Thank you, I'm behind the AT&amp;T and its customers. I would also indicate my father was in Germany, he must have made some leave in a few months immediately before anyone changes their mind.
Who'd you like to decide? You want to do it first?
It's all yours.
We'll save the banners.
All right, next we will, we have two plat reviews to consider, so we will begin with Hunter Ridge and Bays.
You want to go ahead and do it with, or go ahead and do it on Springs and we'll do plaits.
We could?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move the plats to the end. All right.
If we work here, we can still stay, we just can't vote, right?
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a five-minute recess just to allow
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a five-minute recess just to, uh, allow people to circu- is there other?
No, I mean, this is it. This is, this is all that's left for Woodlawn Springs.
I envision people out the door and.
We were way over here, so, uh, they do need to.
Okay. Are your post cops over there? You want to, are you okay there?
Yeah, you all can go out. We'll review the law.
Okay. All right. We will dispense with the recess. The planning commission, uh, meeting is now reconvened. Our next item is the consideration of zoning map amendment, application number 2503, Woodlawn Springs Golf Club LLC has filed an application to amend the R4 PUD and development plan to change the development pattern and use of the existing golf course to mixed density and type residential use at 103 Woodland Hill, Woodland, Woodhill Drive. After lengthy public hearing on December 12th, 2017, in which considerable exhibits and testimony were presented and/or submitted, the commission tabled its action to give the commissioners time to review the testimony. The transcription exhibits made of record at the public hearing were subsequently provided to each of us. At this time, is it appropriate for the commissioners to discuss the item and to recommend action? Director Jan, do you have any introductory comments? Okay. Then, uh, Director Barry Allen, do you have any, uh, comments on the application?
I'm actually looking at what I've typed. I know what I said, but I can't do a motion until I find it.
Okay.
Let's see. I'm still, I'm still opposed to this. I've read and reread our goals and objectives, our comprehensive plan, our PUD, um, requirements. If this was just another residential development, it, it meant, you know, multifamily, it meets, it meets those. But I can't get past the point that it was a golf course. It was a PUD for a golf course. And the people that bought lots there, the golf course was already built, they bought lots on it. It's almost like a bait and switch thing. It's not, this proposal is not what these people bought into. And I can't get past that.
Okay. Mattis?
The property, including the golf course, was zoned residential years ago. I think that was an appropriate zoning, um, approval, uh, in that it lies in the urban community character out of residential neighborhood of the city. I do think that the, uh, request should be approved with conditions. I said that at the public hearing. I haven't changed my mind after reviewing all the evidence. I think that the concerns that were raised the night of the public hearing can be addressed at the fight stage. And it is a PUD amendment, so I know the applicant has already agreed to certain conditions. We can impose conditions with the nature of this report.
Director Carpenter?
I was concerned at the, uh, December hearing on the amount of undefined or, uh, really questions. It raised an awful lot of questions and then the presentations that were made brought out those, the additional questions on top of the questions, but there's, there's, uh, several things that were just, just need to be, be addressed. But having said all that, I, uh, similar to what Mark said, I, I think that, I'm not really of the mindset that it just needs to stop in its tracks and start over. I think we can go forward from what was presented. I think it was a good base. I think it's a concept was presented and it was, uh, well organized, but we just need to put enough conditions on this that we can set up this timeline that is not just an open-ended, uh, changing, uh, set of conditions that we can kind of nail it down, get a timeframe, know who's going to provide what input to answer some of those questions, the ones that are more pertinent, uh, sinkholes, drainage, uh, just, you know, there's a whole list of them. And, uh, so I'm, I'm going to be prepared to try to move this thing forward with an established set of conditions that will lay out those timeframes.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Mathis and I think, uh, Martin, I think you're spot on with that as well.
Well, I've, uh, looked at all the testimony again and I, um, I feel like the R4 present, zoning, uh, still gives the owners a lot of, a lot of license. And I feel like that, uh, based on that, um, I need to support the, the original zoning and, uh, I, I feel like that the case has not been made to, um, to, to rezone it to the, to the differences that it's going to make. So, uh, I oppose the amendment.
Okay. And I too have loved it, gone back over the information presented and so on, and it's, it's certainly a no-win situation. I mean, you have a golf course that is basically failed, um, and it's, uh, the, you know, the person that pays taxes on that certainly has to look at the options that they have available to them in order to, uh, move forward with, with their ownership. The people who have enjoyed the presence of the golf course, um, uh, it's, it's, uh, a difficult thing to, to, to come into a neighborhood and then find something that has changed. And it has certainly been a substantial change, something that I know that we have considered and, and makes this, this decision more difficult than would otherwise be. So you have the kind of those two, um, inertias, if you will, the, the one of the right of the property owner to, to be able to do something with their property and the, and the disappointment of the property owners of seeing something change. So I know that we've considered this a lot, um, and on behalf of all of you, I hope you realize that, uh, we have listened to every single argument, uh, taken every, every, every thought into consideration that we possibly can. So, um, and, uh, it's, I guess it's time for us to make a decision, one way or the other. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to read it here because it's got some legal complexities to it that I want to be sure we get on the record properly. I make the motion to recommend approval of the proposed amended PUD application number 2503 on agenda number 496 with the following conditions. Uh, condition number one is that within 90 days of final action by fiscal court, the following items must be addressed to show compliance with the transportation plan and development and the public services policies. And A under number one is the future development shall be limited to direct access only to local roadways. There shall be no additional direct access into Woodlawn Road, which is Kentucky 605, other than the three existing access points. And a completed traffic study and signed statements setting forth the owner's agreement to take and take all mitigation measures set forth in the study must be submitted. And then B is a final development plan shall be submitted and considered as preliminary plat showing the final layout, parentheses, the use, the density, the streets, the lots, open space, et cetera, for the entire development. And it must be submitted along with a completed public service review signed by the appropriate agency addressing the availability and adequacy of water. Turn the page of sewer and fire protection and signed by owner agreeing that if public water, sewer, and fire protection are not sufficient to meet the applicable regulations or standards, then the owner is aware that prior to final plat recordation, the required improvements, the required improvements must be constructed and approved or a bond posted to ensure completion of the required improvements prior to the final plat recordation. And then number C is a geotechnical report and plan shall be submitted setting forth protection and remediation of naturally sensitive areas with the owner's agreement to comply with the recommendations of that report and plan. And then the last part of that, the D, is a drainage plan approved by the county engineer must be submitted. And my motion is based on the testimony and evidence as presented in the public hearing and based on that testimony and evidence, I make the following findings of fact. The proposed amended PUD is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan, specifically that number one, the subject property is located within the urban outer residential neighborhood and within an existing developed area surrounded by a mixture of single-family and multifamily residential uses. And number two, with the conditions above satisfied and development limited to no more than 136 units, the proposed uses are compatible with the surrounding area and suitable in terms of availability of existing and proposed community facilities and services. Number three, further, the proposed amended amendment to the PUD is consistent with the illustrative uses and acceptable densities of the urban outer residential neighborhood. These findings of fact and recommendation include as an exhibit the applicant's file, which I have reviewed prior to making this motion. End of motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Come out the seconds, the motion. A discussion? Seeing none?
Are you allowed to ask questions?
No. All those in favor? Say aye. Raise your hands. One, two, three. Okay. Opposed? Two? So it passes.
Are you voting?
Do I need to? I, I would. Okay, three to two. So the motion passes. And I, uh, probably to avoid the possibility of a tie, I would vote in favor of the motion. Yes, I'll vote in favor.
What now, what did you do? Did you vote or didn't vote?
I did vote in favor.
You voted, okay.
Of the motion, yes. Director Jan, at this time, I was wondering if you could just give the audience a sense of the normal progression of events that go forth, because I think one of the issues in this was the lack of information that people felt that was provided. And then with this motion puts into, um, the, uh, the requirements that there's a process that goes through and kind of help us understand what that process now will be.
So it will be transmitted over to Nelson County Fiscal Court, uh, which they will take it up at one of their upcoming meetings. They will, uh, take two readings of an ordinance, since this is the amended PUD, two readings of an ordinance and, and take action on that ordinance. Fiscal Court is the final decision. Their rec- theirs is just a recommendation. Fiscal Court could request a, a, a public hearing, uh, or they may just take the testimony and evidence that's presented, uh, and use that as their record to, to make, base their final decision on. So it will be transmitted over once Cindy gets everything done in the next week or so, uh, and then they'll take that up. We, you'll have to ask Judge Watts what date that will be. Uh, if they approve it, uh, they could approve it or they could, they could overturn the planning commission's recommendation. So if that happens, then it, either way, there's a 30-day appeal period once planning, or once fiscal court takes their action. Based on what, if they went with what the planning commission made recommendation, then, then the applicant would have 90 days, uh, to submit the additional information, uh, to the planning commission, uh, for their consideration as a final development plan, and they could also ask for it to be considered as a preliminary plat.
Will? What is it?
If it's a question afterward, I'll get with you all after if you want to hang around.
The, the issue here is that we actually had a public hearing, we closed that public hearing and have another public hearing, we need to announce that. But all testimony was received at that time and therefore that closed and all that's left for us to do is take action on, on the information that was presented.
But if you all want to hang around, we don't have much left.
This is just a question to what you had just stated.
Okay. I mean, as long as your chairman's.
Question regarding.
Process, so.
But my process? Process by Jan, but Jan just. Yes, we'll entertain another.
Okay.
Uh, do you need my name and, okay. Is this, when it goes to fiscal court, is this, uh, public and?
Oh, their meetings will be open, yes.
And it'll be posted again?
No, they, unless they call for another public hearing, it won't be posted. So you'll need to be in touch with the judge as to when that will be put on their agenda.
Could you notify us?
I'll let you know. Okay.
But I actually are, once we transmit it, we're kind of out of the, out of the lead.
I understand. Thank you.
Is there any right for us to have some kind of input into plans? Because the intersection that where I'm at is going to be like a major four-way intersection, so things like that.
We'll, we'll talk about process, but when that application comes up, you need to be in touch with me. Uh, and the office staff will be the, the point of contact for that information and for input.
That's the point that you really do. They're done here. Once the, once the public hearing takes place, they hand you an additional argument.
Yeah, so.
It's transferred now to, to the next level where the lower level, if you're going to go to the next level. And if they wish to do so, they can take up all, all the arguments that you want to make, have a new public hearing. Uh, sometimes they, they do a hybrid, uh, but you need to be aware of that, that upcoming.
Well, thanks. Her question, Mike, was if, if they approved it, the next level, what would happen? But if you want, if you'll call me or you all call, contact me, or I can meet with the group of you all, uh, after and go over the rest of that information, how it would work.
Thank you all. Both way of participation in the process, concerned. We will now move on to the plan review consideration of Hunter Ridge, which is a, uh, phase five, six-month extension to file final plat off Ruber Drive, 31 Lodge, 11.988, zone R1B. We're skipping Miller Springs. We're skipping Miller Springs. No, we're going to do that next, the second one.
Can we ask you all to, to move out with that additional business to be conducted?
Okay. Director Jan, you have, uh, want to introduce any comments relative to Hunter's Ridge?
I think they're chatting.
So Hunter's Ridge came in as a preliminary plat. You all have already, are we missing, we have a call? Did you get the rest of them back? Wait for it.
Oh, yes. Did Douglas?
No, he's chatting. I think he's chatting. There he is.
Come on, Douglas. All right, go ahead, Jan. Go ahead, Douglas.
Okay.
Uh, Hunter's Ridge came in as a preliminary plat. You all have approved a six-month extension. Um, Mark came in and was actually going to let that go void and then resubmit it in April. And I recommended to him just to ask for another extension through April 30th so that we wouldn't have to go right through the preliminary plat process again on the same thing he's already submitted. So it's just a, an extension simply through April 30th.
Okay. Any questions from?
I also move that we extend this, uh, extension till April 30th on Hunter's Ridge.
Do you mean April 30th or is this your six-month extension?
No, that should be April 30th.
Okay.
April 30th this, this year.
A second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Restained? Motion carries. Next, we'll, we'll discuss the Miller Springs Estates Phase Two preliminary plat, Handy Boulevard extended.
Preliminary plat expires within a year if a final plat is not submitted. So this is simply a resubmit of this preliminary, preliminary plat. They actually have addressed all the concerns that I had on the original one, that you all had listed conditions. They've addressed all of those. They've resubmitted their public services review form, which updated with the water, sewer, and fire protection. So everything is in place for reapproval of the preliminary plat.
Questions? Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the Miller Springs Estate Phase Two preliminary plat as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
Director Hall. All in favor, say aye. Close. Stay. Passes. Let's now go ahead and turn to our, the beginning of our order for the meeting today and go back to item G, consideration of the December 2017 bills. Jan, you want to make any comment relative to the bills?
No, they're all simply standard bills. I do want to say that the copier looks expensive. However, the copy is, the, the invoice is for two months of copies. We had a lapse in between the old copier and the new copier, old for December. No, we didn't have, sorry. We didn't have a party in December, so everything is stained. Everything is stained. There's nothing, there's no surprises in the December bill. Sorry, I thought we were talking about January.
Can we release our?
Is everybody gone out there?
There's some standing out. There's a couple of them still out there talking.
Oh, if you, if you want to go, you're good to go.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Motion?
There's a backdoor working.
I make a motion that we approve the December 27th prepaid bills.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Second. Secondly, by Director Corneille. All in favor, say aye. Close. Okay, then consideration of the January 2018 bills.
All right. I'm with you now. But number three, duplicator sales and service, it's $581. That's for two months of copies. And that is extremely high, but keep in mind, we had Woodline Springs that went out on that one. So, and luckily, Mr. Pike did most of the copy in on the sale tower, so. The monthly hosting fee, Piercing Gray is number seven for the audit, so that's your annual audit expense. And then eight is the transcript cost for Woodline Springs, which I would ask for you all to keep that in mind when you increase your fee schedule. If you look at your fee schedule, we need to adjust the fee schedule based on the number of joint property owners. Because I, the Woodline Springs hearing cost the planning commission more than likely upwards of $3,000 between staff time, legal time, the, the transcript, and just everything associated with it, $3,000, $4,000 easily. And they paid 300, no more than, it was 400 bucks, maybe. So it's pretty lopsided.
So with a PUD, maybe we want to look at higher fees?
I think, my recommendation is when you all look at that, that you all have like $5 per adjoiner, which would cover the note, you know, the postage. And you're basically saying, you know, the more adjoiners, the longer the transcript in a lot of cases. That's one of the recommendations, we'll look at it. But that's, that's a very large expense with a very, and the PUD need fee. But I think if you do the adjoiners, that should, a $5 fee per adjoiner. And other counties do that, but we'll talk about that.
We're going to look at all that. Okay. So what, January bills? Any questions? Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the January 2018 bills as presented.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Close. Carries. The, next is item G, the consideration of the planning commission audit for FY 2017. And we went ahead and did that, so that's good. So we'll go ahead and go to the back of the page and look at the director's report.
Okay. We distributed the financial report for the month of January. And this also takes into account December as well. As of right now, you all have collected $25,787 in excess revenues, and then $7,000 will carry over from last year. So we're really, we're under budget for what the cities and the county would pay. And I think we'll continue that through, through the spring because we've got several large projects that will come in. But in discussion with the fee schedule, I did not have time to present that this month. We will be looking at that, hopefully, that we're executing, come back with the amended fee schedule to address not only discrepancies with, with that type of fee imbalance, but also to start looking at what the planning commission is going to have to cover with regard to the retirement. So if they, if you all have to incur additional, the additional $17,000 for the three staff members, then we need to be able to cover that through a fee schedule amendment. But hopefully, if everything stays quiet this next month, and we don't have a, the agenda that we did this time, then we can work on the fee schedule. The other consideration of the fee schedule is being able to amend the comprehensive plan. It looks like we're not going to have as much excess revenues as we had anticipated. So that fee schedule needs to be enough to be able to, to assist with paying for that amendment for the comprehensive plan as well. So, and we'll also try to work on that RFQ request for proposal to hire consultants to do the, to do the comp plan. Any questions on the financial?
Were you also looking about, about the copier? We're getting some bids on?
That's already been, you all heard that. We've got our new copier and everything seems to be going well with that.
What company did you go to?
Do we win with duplicator sales and service? We had four bids, and the executive committee looked at those, and they came back, came back the cheapest. So their, their service is outstanding of all. And so that, that was a key for, I mean, they're here, they're here usually the same day if we call. Duplicator sales. Yeah. They're wonderful. So, but it did, their lease, the lease on the new machine did go down, so we should see.
Because we put it out for bids and let them know we were shopping.
And the lease is for how long?
Four years.
Four years.
And we've also got bids on, about purchasing an iPad, too. So there's several things in the works with comp plan iPads, and we just, time is just, with, with this type of agenda has gotten away from us, so.
Very good.
Training update, I really don't have anything. We're going to hold off with the bus tour until the weather comes around. Do want to remind you, if you have not RSVP'd for the membership meeting, I need to know this week because if we don't have a lot of folks coming, then we need to go ahead and schedule or cancel it. I can cancel up to Monday if I need to. But they are, Preservation Distillery is looking forward to us coming out. She's got everything set up. Springfield IGA will be catering it. But he did give us until Monday morning to cancel it if the weather gets bad or, or if we don't have enough participation. So, so if you all haven't let me know, I know most of, some of you are going to be out of town and try to make it back. But it will be well worth going out and getting an early tour of Preservation Distillery because you all will be one of the first to, to go out there.
Is that that place that used to be where they had the bridal fair?
Helen, yeah.
Quilt shows.
Zoning regulation amendments, that's been just put on the back burner. And then comp plan, we're going to hire consultant to do that. So the only other thing I need to ask for you all to go into closed session, Mike, it's why Mike has hung around, there's one issue that I would like to discuss with you all. So if you, there will be no business conducted, and we'll come out, you all come out of closed session to discuss that, to discuss pending litigation.
Okay. First time then, we'll go into closed session.
I make a motion to go into closed session for the state debate.
If you could, if you could read that.
All right. I make a motion that the planning commission hold closed session to discuss pending and proposed litigation lab under KRS 61.810, parentheses one, parentheses C. No other business will be conducted and no final action will be taken during this closed session. Only litigation item listed on the attorney status report will be discussed, and any action will occur only in open meeting. That's my motion.
A second. Okay.